Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order before we rise to say a pledge of allegiance. I would like a motion to allow trustee O'Reilly to turn remotely.
Don't move.
Second.
By trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Tanucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. You're in the meeting, Bobby.
Thank you.
Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible).
All right, welcome, everyone. I just can't believe how dark it is here. Just unbelievable. But we're in that time of year, right? Days are getting shorter. And till, I guess, what about the 21st, our first day will start getting longer again. So we have that to look forward to. The very first item on the agenda is the appointment of Ken Burn to the Long Grove Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. Jeff Kazmer, who has been on the commission for almost 18 years, from best I can tell, decided to retire. And he just said it was time. And, you know, he doesn't say a whole lot, but we exchanged some messages back and forth. What we've always done is we've moved the secretary position into his commissioner role. Ken volunteered to be the secretary. I understand he takes fabulous minutes, right? So you're gonna miss that. But, you know, he raised his hand right away and said, "I do want to become a commissioner." You know, he's gonna be around a while in our village, and he's got some young kids. He's got some older kids, too. And he's raising his hand. And so I'm looking for, you've got his application here, I'm looking for your support to appoint him as a commissioner.
(inaudible).
Okay, moved by trustee Browski.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Tanucci. That's a roll call as well, right?
Uh, any voice vote?
Yeah, voice vote, I mean, I'm sorry, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carried unanimously. All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
All right, so next item on the agenda is the homeowners associations. We have Bennington on the list first. Joanne Rosenberg, you're here.
I'm here.
Any comments or anything you want to share with the board?
(inaudible).
All right, thank you. Thanks for the kind words. Lakes of Long Grove, Jack Demis, right? You're there, Jack.
I'm here.
You have some words for us?
Yes, thank you. I am Jack Demis, I'm the president and represent the Lakes of Long Grove Association. And what we wanted, we wish to express our concerns about an opposition to the quicker project development. We believe that it is a contradiction with the comprehensive plan, specifically Chapter 4, Roman numeral 2, paragraph 1, which states that such land could be used to promote the characteristics of Long Grove and to ensure that adjoining development does not have adverse effects, I'm sorry, adverse impacts on the residents of Long Grove located on the outer edges of the village. We believe it will negatively impact our quality of life and eventually our property values. Specifically, this would be the fourth gas station within a quarter-mile radius. The only difference between it and the two, within two blocks to the south, is that it's bigger, and then it's actually designed to attract trucks. Now, more trucks are not what we need right now, I don't think. We fear that the building would have negative impacts.
Hey, Jack, could I ask a favor? Can I ask you to move up just a little bit here? Because trustee O'Reilly can't hear you, he wants to hear you, too. So, thank you for doing that. Appreciate that.
Like I said, this would be the fourth gas station within a quarter-mile radius. The only difference between it and the two to the south is that it would be bigger and is more designed toward attracting trucks. We fear that the development would have following negative impacts: significant light pollution. This is a big question. They're closing 24/7/65. More trucks, they would create air pollution, more noise pollution, and we hear them all the time already. Obviously, nobody believes that trucks improve traffic, so there would be more traffic congestion. Also, in order to put that in, you're gonna have the recommending, changing the 5383 intersection, which would lengthen lights in both the north and south direction. You have to have entrance and egress, more left turns stopping the northern traffic. Left turn into the park would create, you know, stop the north traffic, which normally gets to run whenever the left turn is made onto 53. That plus actually having it able to go straight out of that area onto 53, create further delays with the traffic going south. More delays mean, again, more air pollution and further add to the traffic congestion already there. I mean, traffic backs up past Bravo, Bravo, Crofton Road, we see it all the time. So I will close with the fact that we are the closest agency to the proposed development. And unfortunately, we were provided with a courtesy notice of the application. So I didn't even know about it until I got back from vacation.
Thank you for your public comment. We are in public hearing, so we're not gonna be taking a position on this right now, tonight, with the plan commission. Now, please.
I would request, please, that you also email to the village for delivery to the plan commission zoning board of appeals, your position to it, and encourage you to attend the planning commission meeting and make these homeowners associations' new (inaudible) November 19th. And it will be held at the church.
So we should forward this in writing to the commission?
In writing to the village, to the attention of the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight. I'm sorry, we can't talk about it, but it's in public hearing mode, so it's allowed to. All right, any other public comment tonight? Benjamin?
My name is Patrick Matthew off from the 4359, I'm a planning. My association wants to know if there's been any updates to 4359, Illinois 22 application?
No, we have not received any update yet.
And have they been shared to you guys or have they been?
Yeah, no communications. What, I got it.
Any other comments online or in person? All right. Seeing that there's nobody from the public safety organization here, assuming we don't have a public safety report, right? Okay, then.
Could you make, excuse me, could you make an announcement about the house burning that they're going to do, the end of this month?
Yeah, next week, the house on the new fire protection district property, they're conducting training exercises, I believe, the entire week, starting with indoor room burning and clearing, and then followed by the entire burn down of the property. It's a multi-jurisdictional fire protection district training event. They sent notices out to the nearby neighborhoods, and we are boosting it on our social media as well, just to make sure we spread it a little further. So, yeah, that'll be happening next week.
Can we send it to the HOA presidents in the area?
We can.
I think that'd be a great idea. Yeah, because that'll get it out, you know, I don't know if that's a village-wide message, but getting it to the HOA president, helping it out really quickly.
Well, I think that a large number of village residents should be surprised of it because this is.
That's true.
This is going to be a fire right in the middle of a building zone. And I don't even know if they've told the construction people that are there. I mean, I foresee a big mess, because his report says that they're going to be taping next week.
All right, well, so probably more communications can be done here, so, okay. Thanks, Alan, for bringing that up. Any other public comment? Or public safety reports? All right, so moving to the consent agenda, there's two items on it. There is approval of the September 2024 treasures report, and then there's approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the October 8th meeting. There was a change in that Vic recommended that for item number nine, under trustee O'Reilly's motion to approve the preliminary PUD plans for Deer Trail, that there's, we add, subject to the inclusion of specific requirements for the enhancement and maintenance of wetlands on the property. Other than that, you know, everything's the same. So any questions, or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Question, maybe clarification, does the word wetlands encompass the encircusing area as a whole? Like, you know, so the wetlands are protected, everything around it is buckthorn or red light, do we want that, or?
Well, the way the ordinance was ultimately amended was simply to provide that they have to come up with a plan for enhancement to be reviewed and approved by the village engineer, and then have a maintenance plan that also would be subject to review and approval. So I can't tell you how that impacts the invasive species. I can only say that we've put that as part of their steps that they have to go through in order to get their permitting.
I'm still thinking about Iowa. I'm sorry, so just for clarification, I don't know if I understood that. So outside of the actual true designated wetlands, is there a maintenance plan to get rid of all the other crap that?
We did not receive a maintenance plan. It was not required under our code.
Okay.
If you remember, at the last meeting, trustee O'Reilly raised the question about enhancing what was relatively low-quality wetland.
Right.
So we instead have inserted into the ordinance as approved, per that condition that was just discussed, that they have to come up with an enhancement plan, which Jeff is gonna review, and then a maintenance plan in addition that will be part of their CCNR obligations. So we don't have those plans. I don't know what the outcome of that is, but that's something that will be extended by them, reviewed and approved ultimately by the village.
Okay, thank you.
Are you willing to?
My recollection is we're only discussing the wetlands. Maybe trustee O'Reilly can.
Yeah, maybe that's. The ordinance reads wetlands, but again, I, you know, frankly, when one starts looking at how to enhance the wetlands, they may have to improve the buffer area to do that, and maybe Jeff can speak better to that than I, but that's my layman's understanding of how.
They were talking about improving the buffer that was part of.
Yeah, they're.
Yep.
Buckthorn on the invasive stuff.
Okay, but how does that regulate it, or how do we, how do we regulate that? How do we make sure actually they're in compliance?
Well, in order to get their permits, they're gonna have to make these plans and present them for review and approval. Once those plans are received, reviewed, and approved, they're gonna have to implement them as part of their overall development program. And then the CCNRs, which will be recorded and which the village will have rights of enforcement, will provide for the maintenance. And they will have to, among their HOA dues, have to use those dues, among other things, to maintain it. And there's gonna be a maintenance plan as part of those CCNRs. Again, none of that has yet been developed and submitted, but those were the charges that the board identified at the last meeting, and that's what's incorporated into the ordinance. So if it doesn't work, it's Jeff's call.
Well, just don't want anything to fall through the cracks. End up with another field of buckthorns surrounding the wetland. You know? Surround the wetland stronger than buckthorn.
Yeah, I think that was the whole concern that trustee O'Reilly raised, and that's what's gonna be on the lookout when they come up with their plans.
So you want to make a motion?
If I may, my intent was that the new residents are not gonna get saddled with a big problem. And so make the developer bring it to a point where it's in good shape for the residents to maintain.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that's what we tried to incorporate.
I thought you did.
Yeah, their plans for proceeding with the development will have to include that wetland enhancement. But once that's done, there's gonna be a need for maintenance. And again, that was one of the things that trustee O'Reilly raised at the last meeting. At that point, that's gonna have to shift from the developer to the HOA.
And what's the enforcement mechanism there? Is it standard?
Well, there's essentially three things. One is that the HOA has the obligation. Two, the HOA also has the ability to levy a, what's the word, an assessment to pay for it. And three, if they don't, the village will have the ability to require them to do it or to do the work and require the HOA to pay the village back.
Thank you. I understand.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Tanucci. That's still a voice vote, right?
This is a roll call.
It's a roll call, because there's money in it somewhere, I'm sure.
Uh, no, because it's consent.
Oh, consent, okay.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Browski?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, moving right along, discussion of village hall project change orders. I am gonna turn this over to our village manager.
Yes, we've had a few change orders that have come up with the project so far. We have Matt Johnson here from Wold that can help answer questions, and we've got some new information today on it. The two change orders I want to discuss right now are need a power connection from the ComEd junction box up there to the new CT cabinet that's being installed in the new building, and a slight overbridge on the storm shelter that was built. So the changes in the memo that I provided to you, they're right here. Yeah, so the ComEd service connection was originally quoted at 32,368. That is now 30,800. And the addition.
Say that again, please?
30,800 is what it was.
What was the first?
32 and change.
368.
Yeah, 32, 368.
So it's gone down from what was in the board back.
Correct.
About a couple thousand.
Right.
And then the additional work related to the storm shelter, was it originally at 10,435, and that was reduced down to 2,856.
Oh.
So it went down quite a bit. And I think Matt can probably explain what happened with some of those. So if you guys have any questions or comments, you can. I'll clarify.
Yeah, what happened?
Absolutely. So we'll start with the.
Can you maybe stand up here, so, because we got trustee O'Reilly?
We'll start with the ComEd service connection.
Go, we don't want to go sideways on her, but she already is.
During the design phase, our team made an assumption that ComEd would make the service connection on larger-scale projects. That is their policy. This service size drops below a threshold where they've got policies in place that they don't do that. And so the plans went out with the assumption that that would be handled by ComEd. When we went to do the load letter application to ComEd, they informed us, in fact, that the contractor would have to put the provisions in place to make that connection. So we had to go back to Bear and ask them for price to install that, because it was not part of their scope of service. The manager has reached out to ComEd to confirm this policy and has not had any walk-in in response, nor have our engineers in their attempts to reach out to ComEd to see if there were any ways to maneuver this topic.
All right, so let me just, I'll just ask a question. I mean, we were not expecting this extra charge, so, I mean, we just have to eat it and just do it? Is that how this works?
So essentially, you know, it is added scope to Bear, you know, was not identified in their documents. Had it been, obviously, it would have been included in their bid, and they would have had provision to make this connection. As such, you know, this is, you know, obviously, added value, added quantity to that contract, and so the justification of the change order is just there.
So my feeling is Wold made an assumption, instead of gathering facts and finding out what the real situation was, why is this now our problem? Why is this now our cost?
I guess the easy answer is because you would have paid for it had we had, had we found that answer and had put that on the front.
And we would have budgeted for it, and we would have expected it. We would not have been surprised by it.
Sure, and we budgeted, you know, at the final estimate for the project, you know, $1.7 million, and the bids came in at $1.6 million, so obviously, had we known that, we would have budgeted less, right? But, I mean.
So Vic, is there an equivalent of, like, medical malpractice when it comes to architecture firms? Do we, I mean, is there, like, a claim against their insurance firm for not properly vetting and analyzing and making sure that all the details on the drawings and the RFP, that were accurate?
Certainly, there can be circumstances where a professional has a malpractice risk. I don't know whether, you know, as I understand this, and I don't know the facts any more than what was provided, but it is something that clearly was needed for the building. And if we thought that we wouldn't have to pay for it, then, you know, that is why it wasn't there. But I think that the explanation was that it's something that we need, something that wasn't in the specs, needs to be specked up. I think that there's two different issues. One is the charge for the contractor. I mean, the contractor has to do the work, contract's entitled to pay them for that. And I don't think there's any issue with respect to that. The other is more a matter of, you know, and I, I'm sorry that I haven't gone back to the contract we have with Wold, but to the extent that this adds to the cost of the architecture, that might be something that the board may want to have a further conversation about.
Okay, that's fair. I guess my perspective, trying to rationalize how it's possible we had two engineering firms looking at the specs that went out, and through that process, nobody recognized that we actually had to connect this thing to, you know, the building, to the ComEd, so now. I don't get it. I don't know how two professional organizations, the organizations could have missed it through that process.
But wasn't it how the connection was being done that's different?
I think it was a matter of Matt, if I understood what Matt said, that ComEd's policy says that, you know, if you're a big user, we'll pay for that connection. And apparently, our use is gonna be below that threshold, and therefore, ComEd says, no, they're not big enough for us to absorb that cost. I don't know if I characterized that correctly.
Yeah, and the other component of it is that you already had a service. That service needed to be upsized, and, you know, a second service run to the building therein was qualified, you don't need that threshold.
I don't know what ComEd's policies are, but that is not an unreasonable understanding that, you know, for large customers, like any kind of, you know, volume discount kind of thing. And I guess that the assumption might have been that we hit that volume discount level, and apparently, we do not. So I think the point that Kent made is that could there have been further investigation? I suppose there could have been. But I don't think that changes the fact that Bear's gonna be doing the work. It wasn't something that they bid on. They're entitled to additional compensation for the additional work. That's a pretty straightforward change order basis.
Unfortunately, Bear has no incentive to give us their best possible price for basically doing this under, under no other option. So they can basically charge anything they want, and we have no choice but to pay it. That's unfortunate.
We were able to review the pricing that they provided originally. Through that analysis, get them to reduce the cost from 32,000 and change down to 30,000.
How big would an entity have to be?
I don't recall specifically what the size of the service is.
What kind, is that a shopping center, or is it a home store or office building? Do you know? Am I wrong?
Typically, in a, you know, a new construction, you know, so it's a, you know, a site that doesn't have an electrical service, you're bringing, you know, obviously, a new customer online with them. Again, I'm not sure exactly the size of the, you know, the transformer that can sort of triggers that, but again, that was, that was the kind of tipping point.
I'm just curious. It's like, you need a water meter, you know? The local entity can charge you whatever you want. You gotta have one, $8,000 on the line. You know? For, and I'm just trying to compare it to. I understand, I get it. We have to pay it, we don't have any choice. I do have a second question, though, which is, in the contract, it states that if we initiate changes, there are penalties to go along with that. Or work to that effect in our agreement, right?
I'm not sure I understand the.
Well, if we put in a change order, something that we then redo, there's an upcharge for that. That's on us, right?
From the contractor, you mean?
Yeah.
From Bear?
Based on the contract you currently have.
I don't believe that the contract says that they get, like, cost plus, if that's what you mean. They present a proposal, and we either accept it or not. If we don't accept it, then we have to go, for this one, we're gonna have to go to someplace else to get it.
And that's, that's what I'm getting at. When I read the agreement, it was pretty specific about the fact that if we want all windows on the west wall, as opposed to what exists, and we say, you know, hey, you know, we thought about this, and we want you to make that change, there's an upcharge for that, is there not, in our agreement?
There is an amendment to the contract. Now, it depends on the nature of the change. For example, if, and it comes on the timing, too. For example, if they've already placed orders for materials and we want to change it, that's gonna be a cost to us, because they're not gonna be able to use what they've ordered. But let's say that we ordered solid wood windows, and before they placed the order, we changed our mind and we want vinyl clad, that would be a change order that would likely reduce the overall cost because of the lower cost of vinyl clad. I don't, you know, there's not an automatic upcharge for those kinds of things.
So your contract with Bear, to Vic's point, they are entitled to, if there is a change in scope, they are entitled to admit a cost for that change in scope, whether it's addition or reduction. There are limits in their contract in terms of the amount that they can mark that up for their own overhead and profit, as well as the amount that their subcontractors can mark it up for their own overhead and profit. So there are limits on that. And then they are also entitled to make a claim for additional time. So they could say, you know, that's gonna add additional time to the schedule. So those are the mechanisms that they have. But there's no penalty, per se, other than agreeing to whatever the cost of that additional work or reduced work that should be, and then, you know, changing the contract to reflect that change in contract amount. In terms of the village's contract with Wold, you know, if you come to us during construction and say, you know, we want to change the number of windows on this wall, there's no penalty in that contract either. You know, if there are significant changes in scope, like you said, you know, we want to add a third story to the building or three, you know, stories to the building, obviously, you would be entitled to, to ask for more fee. But when you make small changes or when things come up in the field that need to be, you know, modified, we don't charge any additional fee for that. There's no penalty to you for that.
Well, I, I obviously mixing it up with another contract that...
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
No, I appreciate that. So at this point, these, these really aren't discretionary. These are God's. You know, we can't really say, no, we're not going to do it, right? So at this point, how much over are we?
Yeah, I do want to ask, we can answer that question. I do want to ask the question about the storm shelter because I didn't understand. Yeah. So go ahead, yeah, if you want to answer it.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
No, we're just going to say, for the service connection, you have to pay it. We should at least not have to pay you a percentage of that.
No, and you don't.
Don't we pay you a percentage of the construction cost?
The fixed fee based on the budget, right? So we, we don't, we don't do any final accounting, so if the construction cost goes up, we don't, we don't get any more.
So, so the...
Is that the storm shelter?
Yeah, the storm shelter. I wanted to understand, so how, we got a quote on the storm shelter. I'm glad it's not ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars more, but it's still almost three thousand dollars more, right? So how does that, explain why that one was more expensive than what was quoted?
Sure. So, you'll remember back in February, we had the freak weather event.
Oh, do I remember. Yes, I do.
We had one in July.
Yeah, that's true too. We had another one where the power was out and we had to cancel the meeting, but yeah.
So, following that, you know, we were asked to, you know, develop costs related to various different options. So, you know, we looked at parting various areas of the building, adding a basement, adding a standalone storm shelter type structure. We worked with Bear at that time to come up with, I guess, you know, a cost proposal, although at that time, you know, because we were looking at, at options, you know, it was still sort of, I don't want to say rough order of magnitude cost, because they did provide a cost based on the sketches that we've provided them with the information that we had at that time. You know, that option was the option that the, the village elected to move forward with. And so the next step then was to take that sketch concept and formalize it into construction documents that could be then applied towards, you know, the permits and the as-built and all of that stuff. Through that process, there was some necessary detail added to design of the storm structure that was not on the cost that, that Bear had provided, nor was it part of the, you know, the, the design that we had developed in order to get to that, to that point to be able to drive the cost. So, you know, through the final coordination of making it a constructible thing, we had to add some additional concrete and machinery reinforcing and two steel ventils above the two doorways that, again, was not part of the original budget for the additional work. So, that, again, when that final detail came through, Bear said, you know, we had all of this stuff covered except for these items. So that was the one that led to the, the request for the change order. The original request for the change order was the ten thousand dollar and change number. And that's because at that time, they had also made a request for additional concrete work that they felt was not included in the original details that we provided to them. But we were able to go back to them and point to where it was actually identified and so it was from the ten thousand dollars to the two thousand dollars.
And then one, just the other procedural question, so this is being built out here. When is, when is, when did you find out, Chris, and when did you find out that there was going to be an over, or was it just done and they came back to you and said, it's costing us more money?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it was kind of in, in process of, of when they were building things. As we've known about this for, I think it was dated...
The last OAC meeting.
So Chris, Chris, you knew about it, that it was going to be over?
I found out about it at the last OAC meeting.
When, when it was...
October tenth, yeah.
When it was basically done.
Oh, yeah. It was already built.
It was already built, okay, got it. Well, we can do better on that, so if we're, at least you'll have some authority to approve it, right? You know, that's the thing, you didn't, you know, Chris didn't have the, the authority to approve it, which he has discretion to do, right?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Is that okay?
It's not okay, it's not okay, in my opinion, but I, I don't know what, you know, so I guess, Ted, you were, what do you, what, what should we do? What do you think?
Sounds like we have no choice.
I'll, I'll...
Not happy about the thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Not happy about either one, nor we're going to discuss it another time, but it sounds like it is what it is. Needs to be done.
I'll turn, anyone else have any comments?
I do.
Bobby, yep, please go.
Um, I, I've, I've seen this kind, this whole process before and, and it, it's, it's interesting that we hire people who have expertise in a certain field because we're not builders, we're not electricians, we're not plumbers, and, and so we pay big bucks for this experienced professional opinion. And they give us a number and, and, and the, the contractor uses that information and all is good, except if they make a mistake, even with all their experience and all their expertise, we have to pay. How, I, I don't know other people that do that. And, and, and it's just maddening to, to pay as much as we pay for these services and then when there's a magnificent mistake, oops, you've got to pay. And it makes me wonder, well, why didn't we do it ourselves? Which of course, we couldn't. So, in, in a sense, we have no, no choice but to pay the people because they are not the ones who are responsible. The ones who are responsible are the ones who have been paid, paid to plan it properly. And they didn't and oops, we're going to pay because they didn't. That's all.
Trustee Jamil?
Well, I agree with Bob, it should have been planned well, time at the design stage itself. If the mistake has happened, now what additional, you know, breakdown is not provided under that ten thousand dollars, it's just a statement saying that for storm shelter, we need additional time. As far as ComEd, the contract was there and now they are asking money, we have to pay. But it would have been well planned in the initial stage. That's where we kind of held back ourselves to a little bit detail.
Chris, what do you think we should do?
No, I mean you, Chris.
Oh, me. Bill's manager, Chris, what, what should we do?
Yeah, well, the, the ComEd connection fee or connection is critical to the building. It has power to the new building. There is an element of timing to this too. We, right, like we need to get that in sooner rather than later. And yeah, the additional work related to the storm shelter was disappointing to see. I'm glad we were able to at least reduce it down quite a bit, but yeah, I mean, Matt and I talked and I asked if there's any other surprises coming up or anything and you, there's nothing else that we've seen so far that would be issues to come back with?
Yeah. Can you go back to ComEd as a public organization?
I did go, I talked to ComEd several times on this and this is the similar comments back due to our size, the existing connection that we have, that they require across the board to have the contractors for the construction form the work and then they come in and do their final connection.
So Dr. Jamil raises a good question. What percentage of this is Bear, what percentage is ComEd?
ComEd, so this is all Bear. ComEd doesn't have, they're not charging to make the final connection.
So it's all ComEd to do what? To run the line from where to where?
I think, I think it's to run the line. ComEd, as I understand it, ComEd will run the line if you're a big enough customer. We're not. So, ComEd...
Where is Bear running the line from?
From all over there to...
To the building.
Just on the other side of the wall, right?
Yes.
So are they going to have to dig up the parking lot?
No, it'll be directional boring, right?
Oh, okay.
What kind of wires are we putting in there? We're not putting thirty-two thousand dollars with a copper and, I mean, what's the cost breakdown in this?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, maybe it's in the documents, I don't know if I...
No, we didn't get that.
It'll be difficult.
Hey, but how big of a frigging wire is that put in for thirty-two grand?
Seems like a lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, so what's the total distance, man?
No, I, I only brought the cost summary page.
It's a hundred and sixty feet. No, a hundred, a hundred and eighty feet.
About two hundred dollars a foot.
Hundred and eighty feet.
Which, you know, when you're doing directional boring, I can only speak on the sewer side because I'm familiar with that. That's not an unusual cost. I don't know how it is, I mean, I presume this is going to be a conduit that they're going to slide through the, the boring and then the, the wires will be fed through that. So there's, there's going to be some cost, but it's just a very expensive process to do the directional boring.
So, Bear does this all the time. Build buildings. I don't know, I don't know why this is a surprise to them. I, I don't, that's the part I don't get.
Well, for Bear, it wasn't part of their specs. It wasn't part of their, of what they bid on to do the work for.
Yeah, on the plan, on the plans that said to be, to be done by ComEd, on the plans.
So this is not on Bear at all?
Okay.
Now, is, is Bear, do, do we know if Bear's subcontracting it?
They are.
Yeah.
Got it. Toro Electric.
Toro Electric.
Who did all the original electrical work.
There's a markup there, probably two, right? So... Benjamin, has a comment?
My question is, um, hopefully, the commonwealth, I mean, you guys have no control over that, but for the storm shelter thing, I mean, why can't this architecture firm eat the cost? Why does the village have to, especially if it's only two grand?
That's a good question. You want to answer that?
We're, we're happy to have a conversation offline with the village. Again, the, the logic follows that there is something necessary to make the work complete that was not shown on the drawings that the contractor has to, to install in order to make it complete. And so that is something that had it in there, you would have paid for. I guess, the very basic example I'll give you is if, if there was a three walls thrown around or, or four walls thrown around space, but not a door, and the contractor didn't say, well, you want a door, and they priced it, it's on four walls, you would, you would agree to pay the door, right? Because it's additional piece that's required to make it...
So, so let me, um, let me, let me go another way. So tonight, the biggest decision in order to keep the project moving is to agree on the change order for the ComEd service connection.
Right, and it would be in other...
My, my suggestion would be that we would direct Chris to do that and then we'd have a resolution to ratify the change orders at the next meeting.
And change orders, and the other one could be discussed on what that amount is.
Well, I think the amounts are what they are for purposes of the change order with Bear.
Okay.
I think that what, what Matt had suggested is that he's willing to have a conversation about how that might otherwise be addressed.
Okay.
Is that, I don't want to miss speech, but that's what I understood.
Benjamin, yours?
I would also suggest the village should have a conversation about the commonwealth and building fee, if the architecture company can do a percentage of that too, because since they didn't, they made an assumption that was not correct.
Yeah, you're trying to, you're trying to get a hold of ComEd on that part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, yeah. Chris is doing it. So, I, that's what we got to do here tonight, right? But there's no, there's no...
Formal action, but we should probably just go around the horn to make sure everybody's okay with the, uh, action that Chris would do the, uh, change order with Bear and we'll come back with a resolution for ratification at the next meeting. And in the meantime, Chris can have, uh, further conversations with, with Wold.
Ted, are you okay with that?
We really have no choice. Yeah.
Trustee Varoski?
We really have no choice.
Trustee O'Reilly?
No.
You're not okay with it? Okay, so you're not...
Nope.
Nope, okay. Trustee Jamil?
No choice.
No choice, okay, that's three or, a three, right? Yeah.
I'd like to have some more discussion on it, not, not between us, but the decision makers.
Okay.
I, I, generally, I don't like to put blame. I just like to give the store stuff and if, if, you know, we're not serious about, um, um, I, I, I don't know that we're, I don't, I don't know if somebody in the biz says, you know, in a way, that's going to be adequate or, you know, you're not going to qualify for that because you're, you know, you're a mosquito in a land of blizzards, you know, so I, I just would be interested in, in, it, it, this is an everyday thing that happens all the time, if you happen to disly somebody or somebody's supposed to know this stuff and been put two and two together.
I, I think that there are two distinct issues. One is the actual cost of the work. That's what the change orders were about. The other one is, why didn't we know this sooner? I think, if I'm, if I'm interpreting your, your concern. And I think that's a, a different issue from the change orders. That's the, I think, the conversation that Chris will have with Wold.
Understood. I get, I get it. It's in order for me to give you an answer, but I'm, I'm just curious about etymology of the whole thing. People make mistakes, I mean, it happens all the time. So, we have to put it in, we have to put it in.
Okay, so it's...
You can't do that.
But it's, it's actually three professional companies looked at it and nobody, nobody got it.
Happens all the time.
Three.
Former trustee Jaeger has a remark.
Thank you. The, the state of Illinois has a Department of Regulation for professional engineers and one might ask them what their opinion is on this and their ethics board.
Thank you for that, that feedback. So I'm going to, I'm going to, so I think you are yes for keeping the project going. We need to...
Well...
Yeah. So I will also say that I will be a yes because I'm not going to hold this project up. It's way behind, but I think that these backroom discussions have to happen and we got to figure out how we prevent it in the future, so. My opinion.
Yeah, okay. And you totally have to reach two thousand dollars on this project is a rounding error. Thirty grand, that's not much.
Yep.
Bigger.
Yep. All right, so I think we've got direction for now.
Thank you.
Finally knows what will happen when it makes it on the agenda next time. We'll find out. All right.
Thanks, Matt, for coming in in person and coming into Lions Den with difficult news for us today. So appreciate it. Not an easy thing, that's on the outside of the table.
Okay.
All right, moving on to brighter things. The Village Engineers Report.
Okay, Engineers Report.
I hope it's brighter.
A couple of things. Number one is the Village Hall expansion, construction is ongoing. We've got vertical walls, roofing is next. I know that Bear is looking to kind of expedite things as, as they can, so probably scraping paint and things like that will probably start here in the next few days. We do have an OAC meeting tomorrow to discuss schedules, so if there's any updates on that, be sure to pass those on. Number four, the Lake Michigan Water Connection, I know there was the note in the last Engineers' Report that we were waiting to see if we had to go through some environmental process with the EPA in order to get the grant. Luckily, to our favor, we do not have to do that, so we can apply for the grant. Luckily, to our favor, we do not have to do that, so we can apply for the grant. So, that's, uh, ongoing. And also, that project, you need an easement across the Executive House property to the east of the treatment facility, so, uh, working with Vic's office to move that forward.
And then, just a clarification on that. We have the ability to make the connection currently without a new easement. The easement that we're seeking is to reduce substantially the length of the connection. We'd have to go, sort of a Rube Goldberg-esque way of getting there, if we follow our existing easements. And we have reached out to the owner. We've not gotten a lot of feedback, because he's been out of the country, but we are hopeful from the, the nature of this easement, that it won't be a controversy.
A couple of updates moving down. The county projects, number seven and eight, seven Arlington Heights Road, that's ongoing. Going to start some water main relocation next week. That'll take three weeks, and, um, we'll be on to the next phase of that project. Apptekisik Road, final paving is scheduled for next week. The previous comments, I will reach out to Matt Endy just to make sure they know of the fire burning exercise that's gonna be ongoing as well. At the last board meeting, there was some discussion about the sound walls, and how they were warranted, if you will, in Buffalo Grove, but not Long Grove. I did reach out and talk to Matt Endy about that, and he confirmed that when they did their noise study back in 2014, the walls were not warranted, and not part of the project. And as Ian brought up, I don't remember exactly how she said it, but you know, we're past the point to get those included into the project.
So, how's the vertical growth with three years?
Um, it, I don't know how well you heard me on the audio last week, but it has to do with how close the houses are to the road. The closer you are to the road, the higher the, the noise is, and it kind of dissipates as you go further away. So, the data points that they took in Long Grove, at the corners of the houses, were further away from the road than they were in Buffalo Grove.
The, under the Federal Highway Administration regulations, it's a decibel reading basis. And the more data points you have, i.e. the density, makes a difference, and the proximity to the road makes a difference, and we lose out on both of those scores.
Yeah, and don't quote me on the numbers, but I think it's like sixty-five decibels, and Long Grove was at like fifty-eight.
And we may not have wanted it.
Close. True, true.
I know the one wall, there's, I mean, it's gotta be like fifteen feet from the edge of the building to where the wall is, right? There's- Get burned, oh gee.
Eight feet high.
All right, we'll keep it moving.
Okay, uh, number ten, the Route twenty-two and Route eighty-three intersection project, that is moving forward. As you mentioned in prior Engineers Reports, that, uh, they were seeking the Phase Two, which is the design engineering contract. They actually awarded that to Gaywall Hamilton last week. So, um, I talked with Manager Sparkman about that, and that should, that will be a benefit to the village. That'll help with communication and be able to, I'm not gonna work both sides of the table, that's not what I'm saying, but I will be able to have a center ear to what's going on over there.
You know a guy.
Yeah, I, I got a guy.
There's a foot-deep sidewalk there.
Uh, along the forest reserve property, you mean? Hello, correct, sorry, the Park District. Uh, I don't have the final, it's called the Phase One study on that, because there was the discussion about if the sidewalk was putting in, it would need to grade on the Park District property. Park, correct. But now, if I remember correctly, now that I say that, I believe the, um, resolution to that, and I can confirm it, was to put the sidewalk in, but have a small retaining wall to avoid disturbance to the Park District property. I believe that was it, but I, I can double check that. Foot and a half, maybe?
Concrete?
Uh, what it is, probably, what's that?
Guardrail?
Guardrail, uh, wouldn't warrant a guardrail. You know, the vertical fall protection starts at thirty inches, so. I, I can confirm the details, but at this level, with the Phase One study, it's just the feasibility. They say retaining wall, and they put a line on a plant. What and how that's gonna look like, uh, doesn't get flushed out until the detailed design.
I mean, we talked about retaining walls, they, they have to do Route twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
And it's the decision, I would say.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, like we talked about, you know, many moons ago, the retaining walls for the Route twenty-two widening are eight to ten feet high. We're not talking anything that magnitude here. Correct, correct. Yep, yep.
So, Jeff, in that relationship where you guys are involved in the study, on one hand, you know a guy and he gets some information, but on the other hand, is there a firewall that protects Long Grove's interests against what the rest of the firm may be thinking about?
I mean, how do we protect our interests at the same? I mean, it's good you have information, and as you're talking, we assume you have Long Grove the right to do that. What's the firewall to protect us? What if the rest of your firm wants to do something stupid that we don't wanna do?
Or butt ugly.
Or butt ugly.
Yeah. So, I, you know-
Municipal group?
Uh, which is where I am representing Long Grove, does not have anything to do with the division of civil design.
So, you're gonna continually have a firewall in place to protect our-
And just as a clarification, this is not the Route twenty-two improvement. This is just that intersection.
Right.
And you may recall, I don't know how many months ago, probably within the last four or five months, we actually authorized and granted an easement to assist in the, uh, outcome of this project. So, this was one that we had seen plans before Gaywall Hamilton had gotten this contract, and we were supportive of granting an easement to IDOT to make sure these plans got implemented. That's an altogether different one than the Route twenty-two, where we have the landscaping and other issues.
Yeah, and Rita and I were privy to some of those early discussions, too. Actually, just got the check today.
He left it them immediately.
Correct, yeah.
Eighteen months ago.
Longer than that, I think, too, yeah.
Are you up and waiting?
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks for that explanation, Jeff.
Um, moving on, jumping down to number thirteen, a couple miscellaneous items. Winter is around the corner, and we're talking about removing different things that could be otherwise forcibly removed by snow plows. One of those things is the Oakwood Road pylon signs. So, those will need to be removed for the winter. We did check with Lester's, and, you know, there's just no way to power around those without endangering, you know, their operations and the public. So, they're scheduled to be removed the week prior to Thanksgiving for the winter.
I'm not sure I understand that. It's two lanes, one in each direction, can't pave plow to the right going this way, and plow to the right going that way?
Well, there were several things that Lester said with that. One is that the lane gets too tight for the big trucks to go down, right there, to get through. The, you know, a one-ton or a pickup truck with a plow blade could get through. But the other side of it is that it would create a window between the pylons. And if you ever have a warm day, or the sun melts it, and you have freezeback, that could happen. It could turn into an ice rink.
Or there'd be a pile of snow along pylons.
Yeah. Or with the pylons, it's- Yeah, that could happen, too.
It's not this.
Those will come out there at the same time.
Yep, that was, uh, yeah, that's B on there. They'll come out the same week, uh, week before, but I believe that's the week of the eighth. Then the, the covered bridge was struck last week, and the steel trim plate was bent. Kind of a massive strike to bend that plate, but we're working with Carmichael Construction to get a quote and get that replaced under an insurance plan.
Can we negotiate with ComEd for a lower installation fee? Because they struck the bridge?
Uh, it was AT&T. It was AT&T.
Oh, it was AT&T, sorry. Uh, wrong country, all right, wrong company, sorry. It had, it was a pole.
Pickup truck with a boom on it.
Boom, yeah.
Cherry picker. Uh, and then, just the last thing I'll, I'll, I'm gonna bring, highlight tonight, is number sixteen, the Deer Trail subdivision. Um, they, they applied for an interchange permit, which would allow them to do the, install the erosion controls, do the tree clearing and the mass grading only on that site. That was approved, and they provided a performance guarantee for that work. So, everything is in place for them to start that portion of the construction. I don't, I haven't heard the official start date yet. I knew, or they had talked that it was be, gonna be this week, but, um, yeah. Pull them to give us forty-eight hours notice, so, well, that gives them probably Friday to start if they wanted to. So, I'll, uh, see if I can't get a little bit more information on that. Other than that, a few other updates, various permits and people there. But if there's any questions, I'd be to pick those.
Hey, Bobby, you're not in the room. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll keep ourselves moving. Village and trustee, uh, Village President and trustee reports. I have no report. Trustee Browski?
Swalco held their final meeting of the year last Tuesday. Couple of things just to highlight. You'll be hearing more about something called Recycle Coach, which is an application, a phone-driven application that will slowly be disseminated out to all the residents. And it's basically an app where you can take a picture of something, and it'll tell you what to do with the something. So, as an example, if you took a picture of a propane tank, it would tell you what you can do with a propane tank. Eventually, that will replace the municipal links and webpages that are into the Swalco website right now. Because if everybody can carry it on their phone, they can take a picture of recycle information right on their handheld, as opposed to, to the website. And, you know, their data on their website, their, their statistics, not a lot of people drilling really deeply into specific municipality websites to find out what to do with stuff. So, they think this is a, a good approach. They've already started rolling it out, and we're, we're not really scheduled yet for our rollout, but we're on the, we're on the follow-up list of getting the Long Grove specifics converted over to the system and rolling it out, reporting it throughout Long Grove.
What's that called again?
Um, Recycle Coach. So, that was interesting. Couple of things, the Graveslake landfill is scheduled to be full by the end of 2027 or the beginning of 2028. Right now, Waste Management is working on building a transfer station. They're looking at having a transfer station, where the local haulers will be bringing materials to the transfer station. It'll be transferred onto big trucks and then hauled out of Lake County. Right now, they're not sure exactly where they'll be hauling it to. They're thinking there's going to be a landfill in the calendar they'll be using. So, Lake County trash will go to the transfer station, and they're, and then deposit it to the landfill, which is yet TBD. Part of the challenge with that, of course, you know, nobody really wants to see trucks going back and forth hauling garbage, so it's really imperative we do whatever we can to keep as much out of the landfill as possible. Composting, consequently, is becoming more and more prevalent, and a bigger push to, to do composting. Swalco funding is also funded by the landfill, because through the scheme, Swalco gets a kickback on dump fees at the landfill, so that's part of Swalco funding. So, Swalco's considering what that funding mechanism deficit will be and how they can offset that. So, that's something more to follow as well, but I thought it was kinda interesting to share. The five-year plan has been updated and adopted. There was a committee of both professional representatives, as well as general public representatives, including our own Barbara Klitsch, I can't say Barbara Klitsch, who was part of that committee. So, Swalco has adopted their five-year plan, so it's out there. It's available for anybody to look at. It's interesting, they do have a goal to reduce the poundage per person per day of waste. Right now, the, the average across the county is one point six pounds of trash, garbage, whatever you wanna call it, going into the landfill, per person per day. Their goal is try to reduce that down to about one point three pounds per person per day. On the data for Long Grove, we're right now well below that, actually. We're at one point one nine pounds per person per day going into landfill. So, uh, it's good, so maybe we should start thinking about ways that we can further stay ahead of the curve and stay ahead of everybody else in Lake County. It's always a good thing.
Will they weigh our trash?
Yeah, all the, all the trash is weighed, because they have to pay dump fees based on poundage.
That's not volume, okay.
No, no, it's poundage. And just very lastly, Swalco and, you know, so much more going into composting. There are many companies throughout Lake County that do compost. You know, as part of the discussion we had with you last meeting, we're thinking about ways to accelerate our composting here in Long Grove. But more specifically, Swalco's asking us to consider ways that we could require, mandate, motivate, pick the right word, developers, homeowners within, within Long Grove to try to obtain and buy local compost. And it's really a simple concept in that the companies need to develop a, a bigger market for their own compost. And if they can develop a stronger market, then they can accept more materials to go into the compost input side of it. So, if you think about like, you know, okay, I could pull out all my fuckthorn, but now it's a dead example. I could pull out all my trees, what do I do with it? So, if we can build a market for a local compost, it actually creates a realized circular economy of land waste, or of land waste going into the compost that gets redistributed within the community and municipality. So, they're basically saying, look, if you got a new development coming in, maybe somewhere in that bottom line, somewhere you say, all your compost landscaping should be procured locally in Lake County. So, something that'll help motivate, stimulate the local market. So, it's kinda interesting. I don't know if there's a specific ask there, but I think we can start thinking about ways to try to stimulate the compost market. And there's a list of a lot of composters that's available. Share that with everybody.
What do you other communities do?
I don't know, Rita. It's a good question. It's kind of a new, a new process.
Because we, there are gardeners in Long Grove who would be, I, I would be interested in compost. I had no idea you could get it for free or buy it.
Well, there's-
Give it away free several times a year.
Yeah, they could possibly mention, Swalco does.
Give it away free several times a year.
You can't take a truck up there.
No, you can't take a truck. They give it away by the buckets. They, I mean, majority of Lake County is not Long Grove three acre lots, right? So, we, we need trucks, but they'll do bucket things. Like, you bring in your yard waste or whatever, and in exchange, they'll give you a couple of dollars of compost.
The, the managed gardens of Lake County give away several gallons. You can, you can go up there for free, they've already done it three times this year, and you get like five gallons for many gardens. That's, that's quite adequate. But we can also do more, which means working with homeowners associations to allow and develop more home composting. Many gardeners do home composting, and it takes, you know, this much space to, to do it in your backyard, because of many issues many homeowners associations have in the past, that, you know, composting.
Yeah, because they don't want the ugly bins or, or piles of compost.
But attitudes, attitudes are changing, and perhaps education, or education, might be appropriate.
Fully disagree.
Yes, it sounds like a springtime project. Late winter, early spring. First day. You know, we, we couldn't, we didn't maybe have the children in school. That thing just cooperated, figure out some whatever. Why do you have that managed garden program to do in the village?
Yeah, why don't we? That would be, we don't, you know, keep saying our residents don't understand about the wetlands, and they don't understand about conservancy. I, I really wish we could get our friends that are the, or who understand this stuff to maybe have, have some sort of shout-out or newsletter, whatever, four times a year.
Well, is this like a- Well, is this like a topic for our communications?
For that, but you gotta ask somebody.
You gotta put it private. There are people on that, on the.
Senate Quarter Conservancy Commission.
On the Senate Quarter who have that experience and background.
That's what I'm saying, you know, those people know tons more certainly than I do.
Yes.
And they could be so, so helpful. Well, when you tell me stuff like that, you know, I.
Well, I'm thinking of their chairperson, who I know was a master gardener and has extensive experience and has a great deal of knowledge to share.
Yeah, why not? You know, it's how you know the community as well.
End of report.
All right, thank you for that great report. You have another.
If I could add one thing for Chris, and that would be, what would really be an enhancement would be if they could develop a delivery system.
Yeah, delivery system of the compost, for the compost, yeah.
I, I'm not sure if some of the companies don't have their own trucks and they'll deliver, but you're buying in bulk. So maybe, I, I'm not sure, Bobby, it might already be.
Cause I've, I've gone up to Graves Lake more than a time or two, but it's, it's, it would be so much nicer if they come to the house and just drop it.
Yeah, good point. All right, I'll check into that, thank you. I'm not aware of what they actually do, it's all private companies.
All right, trustee Jamil. Trustee O'Connor. Trustee O'Reilly.
I have a couple of requests. One is, and it all has to do with, with the future meetings and, and the subject matter. And the most important one to me is having some forum for the village board and the historical society to create some kind of an agreement on how the barn and the schoolhouse will be cared for. What, what, what I am reminded of is that the residents of Long Grove really don't give a rip who pays for it. They just want it protected and, and, and taken care of. And, and we're not doing a great job at that. And, and we've certainly created a big surprise to the historical society to find out, well, that we own it. And so because we now technically own it, we have an obligation to work with them and, and resolve how this is going to be cared for, for the future. And I don't think this is a staff problem or a staff decision. This is a Long Grove resident decision that, that I think we need to make. And on, so, so that's, that's one thing. The second thing is someday, sometime in the near future, we need to talk about the debacle with the Vernon Hills lot that we spent so much time, energy and money on. And did we learn something? And if so, what? And will we not repeat this? And then the third thing is the, the speed signs are, what are they doing? Where have they been serving? And are we getting a bang for our buck with them? Are there lights going?
Yeah, the lights are going on if there's a bad light bulb.
Okay, it's not me. It's not my eyes.
No. Yeah, we have a bad light bulb here.
And then, and then the fourth and final thing, and that's not my whole list, is that when you talk about the bridge and Jeff, I'm wondering, how much money are we spending for Jeff to fix the bridge? And do we recoup that? So not to, not to be done tonight, but we need to talk about these things and we can't, we can't sweep them under the carpet.
All right, thank you Bobby. Trustee Tanucci.
No report.
Village manager Sparkman.
Yeah, I'll be really quick. Last Tuesday, the plant commission met to discuss Brothers Field. And there were, I thought it was a very good meeting. It was well-attended from, the applicant was there with some downtown business owners and property owners. And ultimately, the plant commission made a favorable recommendation to the village board with some added conditions. So at a high level, they were asked to recommend for approval of text amendments to the village code to allow an outdoor event venue in the B1 zoning district. And then approve a major change to the Red Oaks PUD, allowing them to implement their ultimate development plan. And that's where some of the conditions were added in. So we're preparing the draft ordinances and I'll be in conversations with the applicant to make sure that we're both on the same page. We're both going back to the village board to discuss those items, additional things that are for the village board to discuss on those matters specifically. So I don't know if Helen wants to add anything related to the Brother Field.
Oh, you said it.
Okay.
But it was, it was a good meeting, it was a good exchange, it was a good question.
Sure, good. And then lastly, we are going out to RFP for our waste hauling contract next week. On Monday, the documents will go out, so.
Waste hauling, fresh talking, yes.
End of report.
Any questions?
Are we still recording? Not just ours, but it's a potential control.
Yes, audio, audio only right now.
Okay, and they're, they're posted?
Uh, no, they're for preparing the minutes.
Yeah, you can, you have to ask for it.
Why aren't they posted?
Cause they're for preparing the minutes, which are the final record of the.
Yeah, but in the past, they were. Well, first of all, our website is not being maintained. It's back to being a total embarrassment. We added it, pumpkin running and Hollywood status, sort of. But it's, it's, it's very difficult to get what you want, number one, which is, is a problem. I don't want to go off on a tangent, but up until, I don't know, six, eight, nine months ago, whatever, the meetings were being recorded and they were being posted on our website. Is that a legal issue?
Well, you may recall, pre-pandemic.
Yes.
The board acted specifically to say that meetings that were recorded were not official documents of the village and were only for the convenience of the secretary or clerk for purposes of preparing minutes. And they would not be therefore declared a public record and would not be something that we would retain nor make available through FOIA. If you remember, we had a lawsuit about that, which the village won, but we also made sure that we clarified in our rules what that was. Once the pandemic hit, we were recording meetings, in part because that's what the statute provided when we were having remote meetings. And those, as I understand it, have been, had been maintained and made available. Now that we are past the pandemic, I think we're going back to the status quo ante where we are not retaining any of those recordings except for purposes of preparing minutes. The board wants to do a, you know, an about face on that. That can happen, but currently what's on our books says that recordations are not intended to be official for the village, but only for the convenience of the preparation of minutes.
What do you think? FOIA?
Um, well, I mean, part of it's record retention. I mean, at some point, you know, especially because as, as I understand, the recordings take up a fairly large amount of capacity and we have a regular group of meetings and the minutes of meetings are intended to be the official record of those meetings. That's what the statutes say.
Minutes. Minutes. We don't get, we don't get the, we use the middle of the sample.
I think that's a fair comment. You know, by the same token, I don't know how many people actually go back and actually listen to full meeting recordings after that.
If you miss it.
I, I'm, again, I'm just trying to remind you where we were and what the board acted on. Again, I can't remember, I think it was probably about 2017.
That would be about right.
All right, well, that's something that certainly we can come back to and consider stuff. Now, don't leave yet because it looks like you're packing up. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending threatened litigation. By, by trustee Connor seconded by, by trustee Browski. Go call please.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Browski. Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Continue. That, or it says, Twinni. Okay, I guess you're free to go.
Got it, all right.
Um, just shut the camera down. All right. I am, yeah. You can do whatever everyone wants, I'm fine either way. Sure.
Not, not too warm. Chris, apropos your comments about composting, I don't know if SWALCO has anything, has, has communicated at all to the county soil and water district.[1350.72] communicated at all with the county soil and water district.[150.81]
All right, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly.